Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting today on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. The time is approximately 3:01 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Crowver. Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
There are seven members present, Mr. Chair.
We have seven members present and a quorum. Our moment of silence today is dedicated to two groups of individuals. The first is in memory of Rod Collin, the Tacoma Pilot and Key Peninsula resident, who was found Monday, April 10th. His Cessna was found in Queetz, Washington. He and his plane had been missing for 36 days after taking off from the Tacoma Narrows Airport in March. The second individual we wish to reflect upon is Isaiah Mullins Jr., a 16-year-old Parkland resident who was murdered at the Monterra Apartments last Wednesday evening. Isaiah Mullins Jr. was the fifth homicide in Pierce County outside of Tacoma this year and victim of gun violence. The city of Tacoma has recorded 10 killings, five of which were people under the age of 18, mostly associated with gun violence. I'll ask Councilmember Hitchens to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence. And for our visitors, the flags are in the back of the chambers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is approval of our agenda. Is there any objection to our agenda as presented? Not seeing any. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Crowver.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. Item number six is messages from the executive, judges, or the prosecuting attorney. There are none today, which brings us to section seven, proclamations, awards, and other appointments for boards and commissions. We have item one, proposal number R 2023-44. In front of us, Councilmember Crowver for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move R 2023-44.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt R 2023-44. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-44, a resolution at the Pierce County Council proclaiming the week of April 10 through 16, 2023, as Volunteer Recognition Week in Pierce County, Washington, and congratulating recipients of their volunteer awards.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowver to read the resolution into the record.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas, the annual Pierce County government volunteer recognition will be held on April 15, 2023, to recognize individual and group volunteer contributions to Pierce County government in 2022. And whereas, Pierce County volunteers give assistance in countless ways, such as search and rescue, tutoring, master gardeners, special events, child advocates, coaches, advisory committee members, and a multiple of other avocations. And whereas, it is important for all residents of Pierce County to recognize our responsibilities and follow the example of these volunteers by giving of ourselves for the betterment of our communities. And whereas, volunteers who give their time and expertise to improve the quality of life of the residents of Pierce County deserve special recognition. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that the week of April 10 through 16, 2023, is Volunteer Recognition Week in Pierce County, Washington. And on behalf of the residents of Pierce County, the Pierce County Council wishes to honor and thank the many dedicated volunteers who give generously of their time, energy, and abilities. The Pierce County Council hereby acknowledges the special efforts and contributions of the following recipients. David Frischa, Volunteer of the Year. Barbara Taylor, Golden Service Award. Jessie Chip Taylor, Golden Service Award. Leo Randolph, Golden Service Award. Chris Hill, Special Service. Anne Vonderow, Silver Service Award. John Clark, Special Achievement. Marshall Cockrell, Special Achievement. Rebecca Ferris, Special Achievement. Tyler Severi, Special Achievement. Mickey Woodard, Silver Service Award. WSU Extension Pierce County Master Program Golden Service Award Group, adopted this 11th day of April, 2023. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowver. With us today to help receive this, on behalf of Pierce County and the many volunteers who we will be recognizing later this week is Kyle Wintermuth, the Deputy Director of our Parks and Recreation Services Division. Kyle, please come forward. I was not more clear. Please come forward to the podium and we'll have you come forward and actually accept them a little bit. My apologies, Kyle.
No worries. Thank you for having me. So, good afternoon, Council, Chair Mello, and Councilmembers. My name is Kyle Wintermuth. I am the Deputy Director for Pierce County Parks. I also have that privilege of chairing the Volunteer Recognition Committee for Pierce County again this year. Pierce County was extremely fortunate in 2022 to have several volunteers of all ages and backgrounds providing service to the many departments of Pierce County government. Through a nomination process, our committee received nominations from seven different departments and will honor, in addition to those being recognized today, three groups and 46 individuals at the Volunteer Recognition Social this coming Saturday, April 15th, beginning at 9:00 AM at the McGavick Conference Center on the Clover Park Technical College Campus. Our Masters of Ceremonies this year include Executive Bruce Danmeyer and Council Chair Ryan Mello. This year, Pierce County will hold its 45th year of celebration and appreciation to our community members. Notably, this year, the committee has added a new award from some amazing volunteers who have had served Pierce County for an extensive number of service years. We're calling them the Golden Service Awards. I calculated the number of hours of volunteer service these three groups and 46 individuals being recognized this Saturday provided to Pierce County and government in 2022. It was 57,214 hours. By using a conservative figure of $17 an hour, that equates to $972,638 of volunteer contributions to Pierce County last year. Pierce County Volunteers Recognition Committee and Pierce County Government really appreciate the dedication, compassion, and caring of all the volunteers who gave their time and energy each and every day. Their services are a huge part of what make Pierce County a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wintermuth. Appreciate that. We'll really invite you up after the public hearing and after we have the chance of voting on the resolution. Thank you for those remarks.
Thank you.
And thank you for what you do in helping to lead the Volunteer Recognition Committee. This is a public hearing. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution, please come forward. Not seeing anyone. Ms. Persons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And first, we have Jim.
There we go. Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Pierce County Council. I'm just going to make a brief comment, and that is with regard to the recipients. The Honor of Year of the Award among the volunteers is David Frischa, and I've known David for a long time, and he's been quite active on a number of issues. I'm glad to see that he's being recognized for all of the work that he's done. And I think that having a group award for the Master Gardeners Association is wonderful. My wife just happens to be a master gardener, so I'm going to have to tell her. She doesn't know that she's part of the group. So, thank you very much, and I think it's important that the Pierce County Council is taking the time to recognize all the volunteers across the county and what they do every day, just trying to make life better for all of us. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mello, and thanks for making sure your wife knows. We certainly appreciate her.
And next, we have Mark.
Hi, this is Mark Cockrell. I'm from Key Peninsula. And first of all, I want to thank Councilmember Robin Denson for commentating me and for the other people for supporting her decision. And the main thing I want to say is that, and this is going to be a little corny, and I apologize, but I really like working with Councilman Denson. For whatever reason, she brings the best out of me, and I'm honored that she would have thought of me in this capacity. So, I want to thank you all, and I want to thank Councilman Denson for supporting me and having the faith in me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Councilmember Denson, did you pay him off to say that? Kidding. Very much kidding. Kidding. I don't see any other hands for the public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. And just acknowledge and thank the many volunteers that serve on our boards and commissions, that provide advice for us, that go out in the community, provide services. Some of the things like the search and rescue that we're able to send to other counties and even other states when there's concerns or issues raised that require immediate assistance, they have a skill set and they choose to step up and volunteer in that capacity because they have the time, will, energy, and sometimes specific skills that broaden what we can do as a county. So, it's very much appreciated, including Master Gardeners, because I can't keep things alive. Animals, I can keep people alive. But just really appreciate. And then for Master Gardeners, Councilmember Crowver and I were there this Saturday. They celebrated their 50th anniversary. The history of that organization is quite fascinating, and I did not know its roots were here in Pierce County, but quite literally are responsible for Master Gardeners across the world, came out of Pierce County. So, check for us. Yay. And it was really fun to see, and I look forward to the work they're going to continue to do and broaden the audience and really work hard to help communities, see how even a tiny little planter in your apartment windowsill can make an impact on the health of your home and also how do we get people into farming and gardening in a more sustainable way and just more. So, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't know Master Gardeners had their start in Pierce County either. Fascinating. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I'll echo Councilmember Hitchens. Thanks to all of our many volunteers throughout Pierce County, both for the county and in other kind of community volunteer roles. And I get to return the compliments to Mr. Cockrell. He came to mind immediately when I got the email asking for nominations for volunteers. Mark has led the charge to help expand broadband on the Key Peninsula for many years, and I know, Mark, that this is often an exercise in frustration. It takes a long time. These are tough, complicated projects, but Mark is the epitome of somebody with perseverance. He just keeps at it. I get emails all the time and phone calls from Mark and some of the other folks in the community that he's brought into this group to really advocate for broadband. He's tireless in his efforts to me and I know to Mark and others. This is really a critical utility for all of us these days. It's critical infrastructure, and it's about health and safety, it's about equity with employment and education. So, I can't thank Mark enough for leading the charge on this, and I'm happy to support his efforts. And even though things are not happening as quickly as Mark would like, he's been really successful. We've already gotten a grant with Comcast that the council knows about to expand broadband to over 500 residents in the North Key Peninsula. And then the Department of Planning and Public Works just announced that we're entering into a grant, sorry, a contract with Wave and Astound to provide services to almost 500 residents on Heron Island, and you don't get much more rural than that. So, they are excited. It's really, really important work, and I want to thank Mark. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank the Planning and Public Works Department and John Baker and Hugh Taylor from our staff. There's a lot of folks that have been working on this effort, and we're going to continue to work because there's still a long way to go. But thank you, Mr. Cockrell, for leading the charge. You're wonderful to work with as well.
Thank you for taking the time to nominate where the individual is, Councilmember Denson. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Congratulations to all the recipients. You know, volunteerism, well, you have paid personnel, you have volunteers, but they do the same thing. They work. But volunteers, it comes more from the heart, I would say. They're doing something that they love, something that they contribute. And volunteers are, you know, they're a central part of many organizations and the community. There's a lot of things that government misses, paid personnel miss, that volunteers fill in the gaps, and especially during any type of emergencies or anything like that. You know, you see volunteers helping an elderly person who lives down the street when there's a flood or something like that. Volunteers come in all shapes and sizes, from kids to, you know, just all kinds of different people. So, anybody can be a volunteer, but I think the most essential part is it's got to come from the heart. So, thank you for doing work from the heart, all our recipients, and it's good to recognize them so we can continue to do this. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowver.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say quickly how much I too appreciate the volunteers. They are like historically the original intent of society when we volunteered to get things done and help each other. You're the heart and soul of society. And I also wanted to say that what's always nice is that when you all stand out and we're looking for help for something, we can go, oh, we can go to that group because I know so-and-so that's in that group, and they'll help too. So, you kind of, you know, you mark yourself for more needed events that are going on. So, I always appreciate them coming out and doing the work, the volunteer, and we're grateful for the heart that you have to volunteer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Just very briefly, just wanted to give my thanks to the volunteers and congratulations to all the winners. It's hard work, and it's always good to see the recognition coming at such a high level.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowver.
I just wanted to kind of stand out too a little bit. David Frischa happens to be in my district, and I'm excited that he got Volunteer of the Year award on this. He is everywhere, and I've had to call him and say, hey, have you got some information on aging and disability because he's on that board and all of the different things? And I just want to make sure he knows, if he's listening, that I appreciate him. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Really appreciate everyone's comments. I'm really looking forward to this Saturday morning and us pausing to really show our gratitude to the hundreds of volunteers that give of their time and their talents. Mr. Wintermuth helped explain some of the volunteers and the hours and how that translates to impact in so many different ways. And so, it's going to be a really great time to pause and reflect and celebrate these volunteers and really show our gratitude. I really want to thank Mr. Wintermuth for your leadership on top of all of your other responsibilities, the rest of the committee, the executive staff, who puts a lot of effort into really demonstrating our gratitude to volunteers who give of their time and talent. So, thank you. Looking forward to celebrating you. And to everyone who took time to nominate someone, thank you for pausing to do that so that we can take a special moment and recognize their dedication to our wonderful county. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowver.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Please join me in a round of applause. Mr. Wintermuth will now invite you up to take a photo with us. We have some for you to take to some folks.
Yep. Make sure to have these on Saturday.
Thank you. Right over there.
All right. One, two, three. I'm going to get one more. One, two, three. Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everything. Really appreciate it.
Thanks for your work.
See you on Saturday.
We'll see you then.
Thank you.
We have a second proclamation to consider today. We have Resolution 2023-45. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
I move Resolution Number R 2023-45.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023-45. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-45, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming April 9 through 15, 2023, as Cambodian Genocide Awareness Week in Pierce County, Washington.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell to read into the record.
Thank you. It's my honor to read this today. Whereas Cambodia is one of the oldest countries in the world, was once a peaceful nation after the French imperialist occupation ended in the 50s. Alas, in the 1960s, Cambodia was entangled in Vietnam's war by way of locality, and as such, communist forces were pushed into Cambodia that resulted in the formation of the Khmer Rouge, an extremist group that created a communist regime. And upon seizing Phan Phan, the capital of Cambodia, the Khmer Rouge claimed 1975 as year zero, the year to forge a new society and exterminate existing culture by means of an agrarian society. And this genocide was intended to rid all institutions that forged the identity and structure of Cambodia. And whereas in year zero, the Khmer Rouge forced all citizens out of their homes, cities, and towns, and into the communes that augmented citizens by their loyalty to the Taltarian state. All citizens of intellectual occupations such as teachers, doctors, lawyers, former military and police personnel, as well as Christian, Buddhist, and Muslim citizens, were prosecuted, while all citizens were stripped of their personhood, civil, and political rights and forced into agricultural fields for slave labor. And whereas, by means of forceful labor, the Khmer Rouge attempted to create a peasant farming community, and the killing fields, the sites of slave labor encampments, and to exterminate all groups of the old society, were sent to the main political prison, and S 21, the most prominent prison, only to have seven known survivors of the 12,000 prisoners. Almost 2 million people were killed as a result of the Khmer Rouge regime, and after 1979, over 140,000 refugees sought asylum in the United States in order to escape their war-torn country. And by 1980, approximately 16,500 live in Pierce County. And whereas in 2021, Councilmember Joe Bushnell became the first Cambodian elected official elected to office in Washington State and to the Tacoma City Council. And in 2023, Selong Chung became the first Cambodian to serve on Tacoma's Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. And in 2023, designated as the Digital Media Manager Appointee for the Washington State Office of the Governor. And in 2018, Sina Sam became the first Cambodian American woman appointed as a Commissioner to the Governor's Commission on Asian Pacific American Affairs of Washington State. And we acknowledge and celebrate the various cultures that allow our community to thrive and prosper, especially the numerous contributions that Cambodian Americans have made in Pierce County. And whereas, community celebration and religious practices organized by local Cambodian leaders are essential to remembering and reclaiming Cambodian culture, a culture that once was almost annihilated from the world, and April 17, 1975, was the beginning of a very dark time in Cambodia. And remembering and bringing awareness to the Cambodian genocide is integral to make sure that it never happens again. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that April 9 through the 15, 2023, is Cambodian Genocide Awareness Week in Pierce County, and we urge all community members to never forget these atrocities and find ways to learn and appreciate the Cambodian culture. Adopted this the 11th day of April, 2023.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. A really significant moment to celebrate. Let's invite Tacoma City Councilmember Joe Bushnell to the podium to say a few words, followed by Savang Lam. Welcome to you both. Thank you so much. Do you want me to go first?
I can go first. I'll go first. Okay. Good afternoon, Jirip Suah. This is how we greet. And Suas Reishamtamei. Next week is actually our Cambodian New Year as well. So, Happy New Year. Good afternoon, councilmembers, Vice Chair Campbell and Chair Mello. My name is Savang Lam, and I'm with the Khmer Language Arts and Culture Academy, and I'm also with the Khmer Anti-Deportation Advocacy Group. It is an honor to receive this proclamation on behalf of our Cambodian American community here in Pierce County. Cambodians are survivors and children of survivors of decade-long U.S. wars in Southeast Asia, bombings, genocide, displacement, and now deportations. Washington State is home to the third-largest population of Cambodians outside of Cambodia and an estimated of about over 16,000 in Pierce County. And although many of us have encountered challenges during our initial resettlement, we are facing second-generation displacement by seeing our community members being forced back to the countries they originally fled or their parents fled. We must fight to stop re-traumatization cycle in our communities where we can. Our communities strive to prevail in rebuilding, strengthening, family and family reunification, and creating opportunities for younger generations. We are making history across the United States now. Here in Washington, we have elected officials. Councilmember Joe Bushnell became the first Cambodian elected in office here in Washington and also in the city of Tacoma. And in 2018, Selong Chung. He served as Tacoma's Commission on Immigrants and Refugee Affairs and recently designated as Digital Manager Appointee for Washington State Office of the Governor. And of course, in 2018, Sina Sam became the first Cambodian American woman appointed as Commissioner for the Governor's Commission on Asian Pacific American Affairs of Washington State. We've built Cambodia towns and small businesses. We innovated the donut industry. We are professionals, religious leaders. We're educators, writers, artists, caretakers, voters, advocates, and so much more. We are resilient and must be deeply committed to taking action where needed to support, advocate love, and uplift one another. We are only as strong as the community behind us, as fierce as our peers alongside us, and as brave as those who have come before us, and as powerful as the youth that will take our legacy forward. We are all part of this progress. Thank you so much for your continued support. Akun.
Thank you for being with us. Councilmember Bushnell.
Thank you, Chair Mello, Vice Chair Campbell, members of the county council for this proclamation. It really is an honor, and the honor is mine, to be able to stand on the shoulders of my elders for the atrocities that they've gone through, my mother included. To be here and standing before you, it took nearly, from the decimation of our culture and families, it took 40 years from coming to the U.S. to finally have someone rise to the level of being able to have the capacity to even consider running and being on the city council, let alone elected office as a whole. running and being on the city council, let alone elected office as a whole. Selong Chung and Sina were all young, right? It took us as a community 40 years from the genocide to be at this level. And we wouldn't be here without the support of the folks that have been here in the U.S. And the continued support that we're experiencing today. There's certainly still a lot more work to do. And I so much appreciate Savang and everyone else in the community for helping to lift me up, to do this work. But I do not do this work alone. And I really just recognize that I stand on the shoulders of my elders and my family and everybody else in the community that have brought me to this position. And, you know, it's really just an honor. And I, yeah, I want to use my platform as best I can to support my community in any way possible, whether that's to be in front of them, be beside them, or help push them from behind. So thank you so much, Chair. Vice Chair, County Council.
Thank you both for being with us. We're gonna open this up for a public hearing. We have a little bit different protocol than at the Tacoma City Council. So we're gonna open this up for a public hearing. Anyone in council chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution, please come forward to the podium. We'll ask you to state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to make your comments on this resolution. Is there anyone in chambers? You don't have to, but you are more than welcome to. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Lubey Ankema. And I proudly say thank you and honored for the Cambodian community and so proud to witness how they come together so far. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Songkru Lok. I am a Recreation Coordinator. And when I saw the Facebook post saying, hey, we're doing this, and I felt obligated to take time off so that, to be here with you guys and thank you guys for recognizing us. So thank you.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Dari Pak. I work for Asia Pacific Cultural Center. I'm glad to be here and thank you so much for allowing us to come forward and accept our proclamations. And I really appreciate it. We work so hard for this. And I've been with the Cambodian community for so long and I've been teaching the Cambodian traditional class, classical dance since 1992, since we start. And the Cambodian community tried to, you know, get together and try to work with our community to come up with this. So this is really successful. And thank you all for being recognized. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being with us. Anyone else in chambers? I'm not seeing anyone. Ms. Person, is anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. Not seeing anyone.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Final remarks by council members. We'll start with Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all very much for coming out today. And any of those watching at home, again, when I say it's my honor to read this, it truly is because of how welcoming the Cambodian community has been to me. From my time on Tacoma City Council, time on County Council, I've had the opportunity, many opportunities to go out and share in many of the celebrations, the New Year celebrations, religious ceremonies, appointments or elections and private ceremonies. And it has truly touched me. And I've got to learn through the eyes of members of the Cambodian community about the Khmari Rouge and the atrocities. I always be touched by, we had a showing downtown and had a poet come down from Bellingham, whose name I'm forgetting that you all know. And she talked about her earliest memories being riding on her father's back, running through the jungle and the leaves hitting on her face and coming to America. And that's, you know, how fortunate so many were to get out and how sad it was that so many didn't and that we honor those who've tried or made sure that generations move forward. And so the work you guys are doing to bring, to honor the dance and the culture and the language. And I see it, these events I go to, beautiful dances, being honored. It just warms my heart every day when I see it. So we are so fortunate here in Pierce County to have such a strong engaged culture of the Cambodian people here in Pierce County. And we should be forever grateful. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I'm really proud of the councils highlighting this. I remember as a kid, these, this being on the news as a kid. And I was kind of one of those nerdy kids that did watch the news. But I just remember that. And I remember the community starting to flow into the United States here, into the Tacoma area. And just working on the, in Tacoma on the east side and being involved with the community. And then seeing the resiliency. You talk about that you're standing on the shoulders of your elders and stuff like that. But I think they're holding you up. You know, we all gain strength through, you know, our people. And you are a good example of Americans getting back to your ancestors, drawing from the strength of people who came before us. And it's a great example of the resiliency. I mean, you guys, your community is really, really strong. And sometimes going through really, really tough things brings you closer. You know, after these 40 years, you probably maybe started to see getting back to your culture even more so now. You had the time of getting here, settling, raising kids, trying to adapt. But now we're getting back to their culture. And a lot, not just your community, but several others. And we can find strength in that. And I think today highlighting it for everybody else to see your strength is really important. And we're talking about what happened a long time ago over there, but I'm talking about what's happening right here in front of us. And you being right here is a testament of your ancestors, a testament of your resiliency and for any young people in the future. So thank you for being here. Thank you, County Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to acknowledge and thank all of you for pushing to make this happen. Really enjoyed myself at the New Year's celebration that I was invited to partake in. So to the organizers in the Asian Pacific Cultural Center for finding space in a place to bring the Cambodian community together. It was phenomenal. The food was fantastic, as it always is, but always fun. And I am very excited to see that we continue to push this out to help share culture, to expand it beyond those that are aware and have strong family ties. Because we know that the roots run deep and the community is spread out. And there are some that have lost their cultural ties. They've lost their families. And so bringing them back to the community so that they can learn and grow and experience the culture that maybe they haven't had access to. And then for those that are not part of the Cambodian community, we can see and partake and enjoy and learn. And I think that's how we break down barriers and forge pathways so that we never go through any of these atrocities that have happened in the past before through understanding. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Councilmember Kruever.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share that, you know, this is one of those proclamations that can be very difficult to read because it exposes how evil the heart of man can be. And it just makes you count the blessings that we have. And while the cause of your being here is from an atrocity, but it shows you've been such a blessing to the folks here and to the country. And so how much we appreciate what you bring. And I would love to have had some of that food because I know y'all are pretty good cooks. So it's just, we must always remember so that we, those things don't happen again. And I'll expect an invitation next time. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. I did want to add one more thing and we'll get you some angel wings because those are amazing. I didn't want to pass Savang. You mentioned something in your comments and you really have a hear about deportations and many of the unjust deportations that we've had here. As I understand it, sometimes these families come, children two, three, four years old were brought here 40 years ago. And I know I'm in Facebook communication with a man who lived, grew up on the east side, found himself in the wrong place at the wrong time. Well, because he was refugee status, that meant that he was deported. Now, he'd lived here, came here, learned the language here. He didn't, and he was American. Had been here since he was two years old. Well, now he gets sent back to Cambodia, to a land that he has no knowledge of or limited knowledge, I should say, didn't speak the language and was put back there with no resources. That is not the way we should be doing things. And so I appreciate your continued fight for those who I feel have been unjustly deported and that we continue to find a way to either bring some, many of them back, to reunify them with their families and to make sure that we no longer continue that. I want to make sure that that was acknowledged and that that didn't fall on deaf ears today. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. I too just want to, I'll close briefly with my appreciation for your asking us to recognize this with you. I so agree with Councilmember Kruever. I agree certainly with all of the comments. I very much agree and what Councilmember Kruever especially resonated with me, the sense that what caused the immigration and the bringing your ancestors here, some of you here to this country is absolutely an atrocity and should never, ever happen again. Lucky us, though. We are so grateful. Your ancestors made it out, the few that did. Incredibly serious and devastating conditions. But we are so much richer in every aspect of the word because of it. So, you know, celebrating this day and this remembrance and awareness of these atrocities, as has been said, is so important. I also just want to recognize some work led by Vice Chair Campbell recently. Recently, the Pierce County Council impaneled a brand-new immigrant and refugees commission. We did that because we are incredibly serious about making sure that immigrants and refugees have the resources they need to be successful here, that county government is in tune to the various cultures and recognizing that not everybody learns the same way, not everybody needs the same things in order to be safe and prosperous. And that that is different for every culture. And so we are sincere in our, extending our hand of welcome. And whether you want to open a business here or buy a home here, be safe and welcomed here, we want that for you, we need that for you. And that is one of the many reasons why we are dedicating resources and volunteers are dedicating their time serving on our Immigrant and Refugee Affairs Commission. And it's a permanent commission here. And while they're just getting off the ground, they're already making really important recommendations and feedback for all of county government. And we welcome our Cambodian community to actively engage there as well. With that, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on Resolution 2023-45.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kruever.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call voted seven ayes and zero nays.
On the vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Please, everyone who's here for this proclamation, please come forward. And since there's so many of you, we'll invite Councilmember Bushnell all the way up here if we can and Savang all the way up here and everyone else if you could be in front.
All right. One, two, three. I'm gonna get one more. Actually, I'm gonna get two more. One, two, three. And last one. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much for coming.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much for being with us. We have ordinance 2023-8S in front of us for consideration. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
I move Proposal Number 2023-8S.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt 2023-8S. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal Number 2023-8S. In ordinance of the Pierce County Council adopting the 2023 amendments to Title 19A.
Last line, please.
Last line, setting an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Krueger to brief the council.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, Chair Mello. Every other year, the County Council considers amendments to its comprehensive plan. The proposal before you includes the 2023 version of comprehensive plan amendments. This process started out with 14 amendments that were initiated for review in 2022 through Resolution Number R2022-135. Through the comprehensive plan amendment review process, the number of amendments under consideration has been narrowed to include a total of three amendments. Those amendments include one amendment, including three parcels totaling two and one-quarter acres in the South Hill area. The amendment would redesignate those three parcels from the high-density single-family designation to the high-density residential designation. There's another amendment that would modify three parcels totaling 95 acres from the moderate-density single-family to the public institutional designation. This is also in the South Hill area. And then there's a community plan text amendment that is a companion amendment to that larger 95-acre proposal. All of these amendments were reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Community Development Committee that are before you this afternoon. And there is one additional amendment for your consideration that I can explain at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. Are there questions for Mr. Krueger before we entertain the two council amendments? Not seeing any. Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Chair Campbell to move Council Amendment Number One.
I move Council Amendment Number One.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Council Amendment Number One. Mr. Krueger to brief the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This amendment starts on page 21 of your electronic packet. If I could have Audrey or Brenna go to page, I'm sorry, Denise, go to page 24 of the packet to show the map that would be affected by this particular amendment. So this amendment has been referred to as the Cross Creek Partners Amendment. The amendment would reintroduce a proposed map amendment that was removed from the, from your consideration through the Community Development Committee process. This amendment would redesignate property that is currently designated high-density residential to an employment center designation. This amendment was part of litigation that goes back many years. The council received letters from the property owner and from neighbors that surround this property indicating that the planning commission proposal was the preferred option for this property, which is the employment center designation. And I would be happy to take any questions regarding this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. Are there questions for Mr. Krueger or Vice Chair Campbell? Would you like to speak further to the amendment?
Thank you. We actually, this does follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission. We had it in committee. I think we took it out and now we're putting it back in. When we looked at it at committee, I didn't realize exactly which property we were looking at, but have since spoken with the neighbors. but have since spoken with the neighbors around it, have contacted us in support. So very happy to bring this back in.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Krueger, can you explain the land use that is surrounding the property?
The land use is primarily industrial surrounding the property, except for an exception to the south. So just to the south of this property, beyond a county road, lies rural lands. This is actually adjacent to the rural separator designation to the south. So on the south side, you have rural low-density zone lands. And then on the east and the west and to the north are urban lands that are improved with employment uses for the most part.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the amendment for the reasons stated by Vice Chair Campbell. When we took this out at committee, several of us stated our concern about not having housing here, the need for housing on a corridor that looked like it could accommodate higher-density, moderate-density housing, and the concern of having land uses that were low jobs per acre, like warehouse-type uses that didn't really contribute to a neighborhood's vitality. Those are some of the concerns when we considered this in council, in committee. But as stated by Vice Chair Campbell, after further review, the surrounding land uses are industrial in nature. This seems to fit. Putting medium or higher-density housing surrounded by industrial uses does not seem like a good path forward. We have, in another bill that we're discussing today, many council members are concerned about warehousing and taking up land in our community for low jobs per acre. I think there's another way where we can address some of council's concerns about the future economic vitality of our community that'll be addressed in a future bill and a future process. But for now, I am in agreement with Vice Chair Campbell and grateful that he decided to run this amendment to bring this back. Not seeing any other hands. All those in favor of adopting Council Amendment Number One, please say aye.
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 Opposed nay. The motion is adopted. We have Council Amendment Number Two in front of us. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
I move Council Amendment Number Two to Proposal 2023-8S.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Council Amendment Number Two. Mr. Krueger to brief the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amendment Number Two is technical. The amendment would insert the date of the Community Development Committee hearing, which was March 20th, 2023. It would also insert the date of this meeting, the council meeting, into the ordinance and the findings of fact. And finally, the amendment sets the effective date of this proposal of July 1st. So these amendments that we're speaking about today would not go into effect until July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krueger, can you speak to the normal practice of the effective date that we are inserting into this amendment, please?
Certainly. So any comprehensive plan amendment is subject to an appeal process to the Growth Management Hearings Board. That appeal process includes a 60-day waiting period following the executive signature on the legislation. And so we always anticipate quite a lengthy effective date time period to make sure that we don't end up with an appeal. Not that we're anticipating an appeal in this particular situation, but if there were an appeal, the council could take action to suspend this legislation in order to keep the county in compliance with the Growth Management Act to make sure that we don't jeopardize the county from being eligible for certain grants and loans that the county receives.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. Any questions on this amendment? Not seeing any. All those in favor of adopting Council Amendment Number Two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay. The motion is adopted. We now have Proposal 2023-8S in front of us as amended. Are there any questions before we open this up for a public hearing? I'm not seeing any. We'll start in chambers. We're going to open this up for a public hearing on this proposal only. We'll start with those in chambers. I have Ruben Schutz. Ruben, please come forward, state your name for the record. And we have a timer on the screen to your right to help you keep you on time. Welcome.
Terrific. My name is Ruben Schutz. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and council members. I'm here speaking on behalf of the owners of the lots in the Mid-County Community Plan that would be subject to the change from high-density residential to the EC and then designated, I mean, implemented by the E Corps. I just wanted to say that we appreciate the council's consideration of this change or reconsideration of this change, as it may be. I have a letter in the record, and I won't repeat everything I've said there, but this change makes a lot of sense. It's necessary to bring the property into consistency with the surrounding uses. And it fixes an island of high-density residential surrounded by industrial uses that was left over from the centers and corridors changes. And that's why all the landowners that are subject to the change, the community groups in the area, the LUAC and the Planning Commission have all fully supported this change. And it's also fully consistent with the comprehensive plan, which, you know, moving forward after the centers and corridors changes, sort of mandated a couple things about high-density residential and where it should be. You know, one, that it should be located on transit in the major corridors, and it should be separated from industry. And the current zoning on this property, you know, violates both of those at the moment. So this would be a fix for that. So we're requesting that you pass the ordinance with this change. Appreciate your time. Happy to answer any questions if you have any, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Anyone else in chambers on this ordinance? Please come forward, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to make your remarks.
Thank you much. My name is Bud Graber. Take this opportunity to address the council. Kind of potato-potato, just with regards to the Planning Commission. When they made the recommendation on their grand community plan amendments, they actually voted twice on the second application. The first time they voted, it was to vote it down. Someone not in the majority brought it back to hear it again, and then they voted and amended amendment. Some concern with that. I don't know if that was completely legit or not. I think the Planning Commission probably should review their rules of procedure. Also, in the same vein, talking with staff after the meeting, I asked if the meeting, since it was televised, apparently, if it would be available for them to have a recording of the televised, the video of the meeting. They said they did not do that now. I would strongly urge the council to recommend that they do that. Since it's already being done anyway, it would be a simple item. It doesn't take that much electronic data for that to be part of the record. If that situation had happened here, the screams would have been so loud, we would have had to have some sedatives to calm everybody down. Inside joke. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online wishing to provide comment on 2023-8S?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise-hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And first, we have caller ending in 874.
Good afternoon, Chair Mello. How are you, sir?
Good, welcome.
Yeah, this is Tom Wick over here in Kick Harbor. Hey, I just wanted to give the council and yourself kudos for actually responding to public comment. I heard in your discussion earlier that the council brought the amendments forward secondary to, you know, citizens in the community bringing some concerns to the council's attention. And I just think that's commendable. That's all I wanted to say, and thank you for taking this comment.
Thank you.
No other hands raised.
Seeing no other hands, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Are there any final remarks by council members? Not seeing any. This will conclude this process. We've zeroed in on one community plan area by an amendment today, but the underlying bill makes some changes to our comprehensive plan in a few different areas that we did not highlight today by the amendment, but did by the staff report. So I appreciate the work of the staff and the Planning Commission and others who are involved in these improvements. With that, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll on 2023-8S.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote has seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Brings us to resolutions. And first up, we have Proposal R. 2023-27. Councilmember Krueger for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move R. 2023-27.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023-27. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal Number R. 2023-27, a resolution of the Pierce County Council approving a change in the legal name and the corporate name of Pierce County Fire Protection District Number 21 to Graham Fire and Rescue pursuant to revised Code of Washington 523060.
Thank you. Ms. Long to brief the council.
Thank you. So as stated in the title, this resolution would approve the change in the legal and corporate name of Pierce County Fire Protection District Number 21 to Graham Fire and Rescue. State law at RCW 5230060 does allow for such a name change when there is a resolution of the Board of the Fire Commissioners of the district, and then again upon a resolution of the legislative body where that fire district is located agreeing to such a change. You will see in your packets Resolution Number 986 from the Board of Fire Commissioners from Pierce County Fire Protection District Number 21 proposing the district name change. And they are citing in support of their request the growth in population of the district since its formation, as well as the use of the name Graham Fire and Rescue for more than 10 years on all its apparatus and stations. This proposal was heard in the Rules and Operations Committee on March 27th and received a due-pass recommendation. I believe there are representatives here from the district.
Thank you. We do have Chief Espinoza here, along with the Chief Financial Officer of the Fire District. Chief, would you like to come forward and share any thoughts you might have? Pretty straightforward here. Thanks for making the request and for your leadership, but certainly want to give you any time to make any remarks you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to the council. I just simply want to say thank you for your consideration on the resolution. This is, albeit a legal and small process, an important one in helping us maintain recognizability in the community and aligning our brand and messaging. So thank you again for your consideration and great to be here with you all.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions by council members before we open this up for a public hearing? I'm not seeing any. Let's do just that. If there's anyone else in the audience wishing to provide comment on Resolution 2023-27, please come forward and state your name for the record. I don't see anyone else, so let's turn online. Ms. Persons?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise-hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands.
We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Are there any final remarks by council members? Councilmember Krueger.
I just want to say thank you. Getting the confusion from numbers and names and, and back when I first was getting out in the area, Graham Fire, okay, and well, what's 21? What, so anyway, thank you for getting this done. I'm happy that we could sponsor it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Krueger. Not seeing any other hands. Thank you again for the important work that you and the Fire Department does to serve our community, and happy to limit the confusion so that you can have one less headache to deal with and do your job as efficiently as possible. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on 2023-27?
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hinton.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote has seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to Proposal 2023-40. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
I move, turn my page, Chair, I'm sorry, 2020-R-2023-40.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023-40. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal Number R. 2023-40, a resolution of the Pierce County Council setting the date of an evening District Number Five council meeting for Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Fife City Hall Council Chambers, 5411 23rd Street East, Fife, Washington.
Thank you. Ms. Long to brief the council.
Thank you. So the Pierce County Charter provides that the council shall conduct at least one evening meeting in each of the seven districts each year. And the council's rules of procedure provide that the specific time, place, and dates of these evening meetings be set by resolution. So the resolution before you right now, R. 2023-40, does just that for the District Five evening meeting. And as announced by the clerk, that will be Thursday, April 27th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Fife City Hall. And I'll note that this meeting will be held in addition to the regular 3:00 p.m. Tuesday meeting of that week. And my background remarks will count for the next resolution on your agenda, 2023-42, which is similar to this. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell, anything to add?
Thank you, my honor, to bring a meeting out into the community and into the community of Fife. I think this may be the first time we've been at their town hall down there. So I want to thank them for hosting us. We'll get an update on what's happening in Fife and a couple presentations on food insecurity across Pierce County.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell, and thank you for kicking off our in-district town hall series this year. Not seeing any questions by council members. This is a public hearing on Resolution 2023-40. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment? Not seeing any. Ms. Persons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise-hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands.
We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any final remarks by council members? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on 2023-40?
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hinton.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote has seven ayes and zero nays.
With one reluctant aye, but seven altogether and zero nays, the resolution is adopted.
I was not that reluctant.
We next up have Proposal R. 2023-41S. Councilmember Denson for a motion.
Yes, I will move Proposal R. 2023-41S.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023-41S. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal Number R. 2023-41S, a resolution of the Pierce County Council initiating amendments to the comprehensive plan for Pierce County for the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic update.
Last line, please.
Last line is council.
Mr. Krueger to brief the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the title of this proposal indicates, this resolution would initiate the process for the county to consider comprehensive plan amendments as part of the 2024 state-mandated comprehensive plan periodic update. The proposed resolution identifies 19 amendments that the county council intends to consider as part of this comprehensive plan periodic update process. The potential amendments are all listed in Exhibit 8 of the resolution. None of the amendments that are listed in the resolution would be approved through your action today. They would simply be initiated for additional study and analysis by the Planning and Public Works Department. This process includes a lengthy public process, considering public forums at the Land Use Advisory Commissions, the Pierce County Regional Council, and the Planning the Pierce County Regional Council, and the Planning Commission. The amendments that the Planning Commission considers may be incorporated into the final amendments for your consideration in the fall of 2024. The Planning Commission may also suggest changes, alternative solutions, or denial of any of the amendments that are included in this resolution before you today. Proposed amendments that do make it through the entire process will come up to the council for consideration in the fall of 2024 for final action. This proposal was considered by the Community Development Committee at its April 3, 2023, hearing and was forwarded to the full council with a due pass as substituted recommendation. And, Mr. Chair, I was not planning to go through the details of each amendment this afternoon, although I'm happy to take any questions on specific amendments as members would like me to. There was extensive discussion on each of these amendments at the committee, and I think that the entire council participated in the committee hearing and is familiar with these amendments. Again, happy to take any questions on any of the specifics. And then finally, I would note that there is one amendment for your consideration associated with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated by Mr. Krueger, this is the opportunity for council to initiate the concepts we want further studied and analyzed by the professional staff in the Planning Department and our Planning Commission. And it will culminate in consideration by council towards the end of next year, but a very important step in the process to initiate concepts. Are there questions for Mr. Krueger before we move Amendment Number One? Vice Chair Campbell to move Council Amendment Number One, please.
I move Council Amendment Number One to Proposal R 2023-41-S.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Council Amendment Number One. Mr. Krueger to brief the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This amendment would reorganize all of the 19 amendments that are included in Exhibit A into two different categories. The first category would be amendments that would be initiated formally through this process and evaluated pursuant to Pierce County Code Title 19C. There are specific criteria that are analyzed as part of a Comprehensive Plan Amendment process when we're looking at a periodic update. And that would include nine amendments of the total. There's another list of 10 amendments, which are all within the existing scope of work that the Planning and Public Works Department is already kind of looking at as part of this larger update process. And so what this amendment would do is it would pull out those amendments that are already within the scope of work. It would identify them to make sure that all the proper environmental review is completed and the analysis is completed and the study is done for all of these amendments. It would provide the council with an opportunity to approve, you know, any of the amendments that are listed here in the resolution today. But the work that would be done by the Planning and Public Works Department is minimized by recognizing those 10 amendments that are already part of the existing scope of work. And so it's, in some ways, it's a technical amendment, but it also is intended to help save some time and some process for the staff that are working on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Silva, I apologize. I should have called on you as the lead staff before we considered the amendment to see what if any department comments there might be. My apologies, Ms. Silva. But let me turn it to you and see if you have any comments, not necessarily about the amendment, but as always, department staff is welcome to comment on anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members. My name is Angie Silva, and long-range planning manager for Planning and Public Works Department here at the county. We appreciate the opportunity to comment on the draft resolution. We have provided a memo on all 19 amendments related to that. I know we're pressed for time and want to use everyone's time wisely. Happy to respond or answer any questions on each of our comments on the 19 proposed amendments for the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Silva, and thank you for providing the department's thoughts in writing last week. This amendment is reflective of some of the feedback we got by department staff and a conversation I had with department staff. It does streamline some of the staff work while still making sure that council's requests for these various topic areas are fully addressed through this Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. So I appreciate council considering this, reorganizing how our thinking gets analyzed in the Comprehensive Plan process. I also just want to take a brief step back and say thank you to council for taking this process so seriously. We have 19 amendments. Gives you some sense of how seriously council takes this process, how important we know this process to be about how our community looks, feels, is developed, how great places are protected and the natural resources are protected. So clearly, we have a good understanding and appreciation for the importance of this process that only comes around now once a decade. We only do this kind of robust Comprehensive Plan amendment every decade. So it's really important that council is fully engaged in this really important process that sets the tone, really, for how our community grows and how remaining a great place to live. So it's the beginning of a process and a very lengthy one. With that, the vote is on Council Amendment Number One. All those in favor of adopting Council Amendment Number One, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion is adopted. We now have Proposal R 2023-41-S in front of us as amended. Let's open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on 2023-41-S as amended? Please come forward. State your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments.
I'll try.
There's a lot in here.
My name is Bud Ryberg. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. Reading the amendment, it seems to have rearranged things somewhat. Clarification, and you've probably done this a few times during the meeting already. Since we divided it up into two pages, is Exhibit A and Exhibit B moving forward together? Or we've decided to make Exhibit B part of something else? Okay. Hopefully folks at home can get that as well. I do have a concern with one item on Exhibit A, Amendment 14. Just to remind everyone that in the Graham Community Plan, R 20, which is normally a residential zone, is a la-ha zone in the Graham Community Plan. Hopefully, staff was aware of that and will adjust that appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. We will do some clarification at the end of the public hearing as we normally do. Not seeing anyone else in chambers for this resolution. Ms. Persons, who's online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And first, we have Erica.
Thank you, Chair and council. This is Erica Snell. I cannot be in chamber to review what is on the agenda in those 19 resolutions. However, I am hoping that one of my council has sponsored the zoning change to community employment for my childcare sitting in District Five that I have been discussing in public comment. I am aware that there is an application period in July that's open for a month for next year's resolution amendment for the Comprehensive Plan. However, it was not been, it was not told to me that this was the process when it should have been, and I'm stuck in that conditional use permit process that's absolutely atrocious for what we're trying to achieve. I did look at the records and minutes for Resolution 202096-SQ, and I do see several articles in Resolution 202096... CE zoning. I went to the Planning Department and asked them to make sense of this, and Aaron Peterson was to do some reviewing on why my property is sitting in CE zoning on something that was approved by council last, in 2020, but it's being recorded as SF. So I'm hoping, again, that one of my council members has sponsored my property specifically in what is sitting in SF zoning, which should be recognized as DE zoning and would be a part of this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And next, we have Jim.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is James Helm. I reside in the Graham Community Plan area. Yesterday, I sent you a statement, which was really too long to read in three minutes, about Community Plan Text Amendment Number 14. I stated my opposition to that amendment, but recognize that it may go forward for future review within the packet of amendments before you. I consider the two-family duplex to be inconsistent with planning in rural areas. It's an urban design found largely in the county in the Parkland-Spanaway Midland Community Plan area. As a member of the four-year-long Graham Community Planning process, the planning board members heard clearly from our fellow citizens what they wanted, and they wanted some simplicity in the plan. Thus, we restricted the urban land use classifications to four: single-family residential, mixed-use district, moderate-high-density residential, and the employment centers. Our citizens were not in favor of the more intensive densities found in South Hill, plus they sought an avoidance of more duplexes as we see in Parkland-Spanaway. Duplexes were part, however, of the MUD and MHR classifications, and they remain there as such today. Duplexes were not to be allowed in the rural residential areas. We also had a Reserve V land set aside for future incorporation into the urban growth area, the UGA. Duplexes were permitted there. The Graham Community Planning Board could not alter that classification. The Reserve V was actually colored black on our maps. However, some years later, in response to a case before the state's Growth Management Hearings Board on various issues, the state board stated that the Reserve classification was not consistent with the Growth Management Act. In order to comply, the county simply changed the name from Reserve V to Rural V. Hearings Board accepted that change without looking at the actual land usage and actual regulations, and that was a mistake. As this goes forward, and it seems it will, I will follow it, and I will highlight those areas where the current R V policies are inconsistent with the Growth Management Act, and then hopefully we'll get some changes that should have occurred a few years ago. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for considering my comments.
Thank you.
Next is caller ending in 874.
Yes, Chair Mello, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yeah, this is Tom again, Tom Wick, out here in Big Harbor. It's a question for the council as a body. You said that the Comprehensive Plan review process was every 10 years. And the question I have is, does the council as a body have the authority and the ability to, after receiving public comment, make amendments to the Comprehensive Plan within that 10-year cycle? Or are they obligated to wait the 10 years before they can make changes to it? So that's just a question I had. And I think the lady's name spoke on behalf of Pierce County Planning and Public Works. I thought her name was Ms. Silva. Please correct me if I'm wrong. But I think it's more of a question for her. But anyway, that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other hands.
Seeing no other hands, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Let me first clarify my previous statement about what happens every 10 years. Every 10 years, we do what's called a periodic update of our Comprehensive Plan. This is where every 10 years, per state law, those of us that plan under the Growth Management Act, like Pierce County and some of the cities in Pierce County, must do a full comprehensive review of our Comprehensive Plan to look for consistencies and inconsistencies with state law changes that have happened in those 10 years. And we must review our Comprehensive Plan for specific elements of the Comprehensive Plan, the housing element, the transportation element, and other key specific elements. We must make sure that we are consistent with updated law and updated guidance from the state and other processes, like making sure we're consistent with Pierce County county-wide planning policies and Peterson Regional Council Vision 2050 updates. This is a process we do every 10 years to make sure we're in alignment with state, countywide, and regional efforts to make sure that our growth plan is in order. We touch the Comprehensive Plan every other year to make policy changes, as was indicated by a previous bill. And then we make other changes to the development code to make sure that they're consistent with the policies that we have in our Comprehensive Plan. So we do amend the comp plan for some reasons more frequently than every 10 years, but we must do this kind of full comprehensive review for consistency with the Growth Management Act and countywide planning policies every 10 years. I hope that's clear. Mr. Krueger can correct me for where I misspoke. I will ask Mr. Krueger to speak a little bit more specifically to, first, the differences between Exhibits A and B in the resolution. Can you please state very clearly why we have two different exhibits? And then I'm going to ask you to zero in on Amendment Two, please, Mr. Krueger, and speak to the purpose of Amendment Two.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Exhibit A to the resolution includes nine amendments that would be formally initiated for consideration as part of the periodic update. Those amendments will be evaluated pursuant to specific criteria in the Pierce County Code that's tied to the periodic update. Exhibit B includes other amendment concepts that are already embedded in the scope of work that the Planning and Public Works Department has embarked upon. Therefore, they're being recognized formally as part of the process. In some ways, just to keep track of these ideas, to make sure that the council's legislative priority concepts are not lost throughout this very large bit of work that's coming forward. And so they have been identified, but they're currently embedded in that scope of work, and they will not be considered under those specific criteria for plan amendments that have been initiated. So that's the distinction between Exhibits A and B in the resolution. Your second question had to do with Amendment Number Two. And Amendment Number Two is in the list of amendments that would be initiated for formal consideration and evaluation based upon the criteria that I've described in our Comprehensive Plan procedures. This amendment concerns commercial daycare centers within the moderate-density, single-family designation, which is implemented by the MSF and the SF zones. And this amendment would request that the Planning and Public Works Department take a look at authorizing these sorts of uses, these commercial daycare centers, with no limits on the hours of operation or the number of children in that particular zone classification. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members or final? We did close the public hearing, and so we are on any final remarks or final questions by council members on this resolution as amended? Not seeing any. I'll just state for the record, again, really appreciate council members grappling with all of this really important detail, putting forward some really good thinking about some of the items that we think are not captured yet in this big, huge Comprehensive Plan update that the council has been briefed on several times over the last year and a half. update that the council has been briefed on several times over the last year and a half. These are specific issue areas that council wants to make sure is analyzed for our future consideration. There's a lot more that's not listed here that I know council is very, very interested in, but these are some of the things that we, we don't think we've heard before in previous briefings that we want to make sure is analyzed for our, for our future consideration. I will state for myself, there are several items here in amendments that I do not plan on supporting at final when they come back to council for future consideration after analyzed. I do want to see the analysis, but there are ideas in here that I think are in clear violation of Vision 2050 or our growth targets, the commitments we've made to the cities and towns of Pierce County and our growth plan as an example. But I'll still be voting to advance this, to allow the, the analysis and the consideration to happen. This is a huge project that council will be focusing on between now and the end of next year. And seeing no other hands, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll on 2023 dash 41 S.
Thank you. Councilmember Kruger?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, Resolution 2023 dash 41 S is adopted. We have 2023 dash 42 in front of us. Councilmember Denson for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move proposal number 2023 dash 42.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023 dash 42. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R 2023 42, a resolution of the Pierce County Council setting the date of an evening District Seven council meeting for Thursday, May 18, 2023, at 6:00 PM at Long Branch Improvement Club, 4312 Key Peninsula Highway Southwest, Long Branch, Washington. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Long?
Thank you. So the Charter and Code foundation is the same as for the previous resolution setting an evening council meeting. The details have been stated, so I'll only note that this meeting, it shall be held in addition to the regular 3:00 PM Tuesday meeting of that same week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Councilmember Denson, in addition to fulfilling their request for hard copy maps to not get lost on Long Branch, what else would you like to offer?
It's not that far. The roads are paved.
There's electricity out there.
There's electricity. It's going to be fine. Don't be, don't be afraid. I'll put balloons out there or something. It's going to be a wonderful meeting, and I appreciate, I know it's a little bit of a, a little bit of a beautiful drive, and I appreciate you all coming.
Thank you for hosting us, Councilmember Denson. Vice Chair Campbell?
Yeah, just kind of trying to Google how to get there. Hold on, it's still calculating.
One road.
Calculating, calculating. Would it be in order to amend this to change the location? Could we do that?
No.
Thank you, Chair.
You're going to love your improvement club. It is gorgeous.
It really is an amazing historic structure.
I'll remember this.
It's a little hazing for our new member.
See if it passes.
Let us open up Resolution 2023 dash 42 for public hearing. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comments? Not seeing any. Ms. Persons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. Not seeing any hands.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any final remarks? This is Councilmember Denson's first in-district meeting. Thank you for choosing this beautiful facility in all seriousness. It's near a county piece of open space. It's not a park yet because it's not open to the public, but not too far from Devil's Head. Beautiful county open space, so maybe some of us can get there early and tromp around. It's an amazing piece of ground, but thank you for taking us out to the Key Peninsula in all seriousness. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on Resolution 2023 dash 42.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Pass.
Councilmember Campbell?
Pass.
Councilmember Kruger?
Aye.
That was an aye, ma'am?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
Now, pass, I'll come back to you, so. Councilmember Morell?
Councilmember Morell, I see that plane behind you. You could just fly out there. There's a big lawn you could land on.
Yes, I could do that. Okay, I will be an aye.
Thank you. And Councilmember Campbell?
I don't have a plane. Well, I could take, we could take a boat, right? Does that, that might be, could we commandeer the ferry maybe?
No.
Thank you.
You better, better check charging stations.
The rambunctious today, Madam Clerk.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted.
Most contentious legislation tonight.
Who knew, right? I thought the comp plan would be more contentious this evening. Thank you. Item 10 is other business and announcements. Is there any other business or announcements by council members? Not seeing any. Ms. Long, any other business for members today?
Nothing today. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item 11, Citizens Forum. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the county council on any items we have jurisdiction over? Please come forward and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to make your remarks. Seeing no one in chambers, Ms. Persons?
For any member of the public wishing to participate in Citizens Forum, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. First is caller ending in eight seven four. Oh, and it looks like that caller actually lowered their, oh, now it's back up. Caller ending in eight seven four.
Yes, Chair Mello, this is Tom Wick again out here in Gig Harbor. And anyway, this is a little odd, but I had this sinking feeling that something was going to happen to my internet access right before 3:00. So I apologize. I went in at 2:00 to check my email account, see if I'd received a response from the assistant building official or from the building official regarding this email, but my email is currently inaccessible. But I had the foresight to actually do a screenshot of the email so I can read it to you this eve, this afternoon at 3:00. So it's more than a coincidence that right before 3:00 I am knocked out. But anyway, I sent this email at Monday, April 10th, 2:41 PM, and I'm going to read it verbatim, and it says, "Good afternoon, Ms. Denson and to all those copied. Given you are Pierce County District Seven representatives and given parcel 0221182012 is located within your district, I am respectfully requesting that you personally ensure this action is taken as described and within the timeframe described herein. Pierce County has been aware of an issue that threatens the life, health, and safety of our home's occupants should an act of God occur, which leaves me concerned they might be aware of other code enforcement, comma, code compliance associated issues that don't, they don't intend to act on until after our property is sold. Why? We built our home with approved and valid permits to include the required completed inspection, so we can successfully defend against any such actions, whereas a new owner cannot. Their only recourse being the initiation of a lawsuit against us, the sellers, for failing to disclose. Hence this email, hence this exercise in due diligence to learn and to know. The seller's disclosure form requires that a property owner disclose all known issues and concerns associated with the property that are detrimental to property value when they sell it. And given Pierce County failed to address an issue known to them for years that does threaten the life, health, and safety of our home's occupants should another act of God occur, and given they refused to disclose why they rendered permit 761519 invalid back in 2017, and given they made an attempt to end my life on October 2nd, 2022, it's an imperative that I exercise due diligence with Pierce County, the jurisdiction having authority, before completing a seller's disclosure form. Should Pierce County fail to act on any code compliance, code enforcement, associated matters after they complete a countywide search of all records, querying parcel 0221182012 4704 Hunt Street Northwest and Thomas P. Wick, on or before May 10th, 2023. If necessary, I will argue vehemently, especially if the issues are associated with matters that threaten the life, health, and safety of our home's occupants. Pierce County forfeited that right to do so after May 10th, 2023. I am confident a jury of my peers would agree with me. This email will be attached to and be included with a seller's disclosure form when and if we ever choose to sell our property. Therefore, please ensure it's given the consideration it deserves."
Thank you.
And Chair Mello, like I said, I, yeah, can I just wrap it up real quick?
One last sentence, please. I have to be, I have to be fair to everybody.
Fair enough. I just wanted everybody to know that I did request a confirmation of receipt via email so that I would not have to make this public comment, but it was imperative that I had this on the record for future reference. Yeah, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for being with us.
Next is Erica.
Hello, Chair, Mello and council. I just wanted to say thank you. I was uninformed with what was on the agenda today, and I am very pleased to see that you're recognizing childcare centers and their inability to provide adequate services with the population with the way the zoning restrictions are. I'm really excited to see that amendment, and I just want to thank everyone for their time and consideration. I know this doesn't specifically direct anything towards my specific property, but for providers in general, this is a huge step in the right direction, and I just want to appreciate you guys very much for listening and taking that into consideration, and thank you.
Thank you for being with us.
No other hands.
We'll close the Citizens Forum portion of our meeting. Seeing no other business before the county council, we are adjourned.